Okay, good evening, everyone. It is Monday, February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, at six P. M. in the Susan Telly Lodge, the boardroom of the eighteen eighty-seven Bel Air. Um, I'd like to start with the
Hi, I'm Jeanine Stewart, of the United States of America, and it's due pretty well in four weeks' time. One nation, under God, neither is small, with liberty and justice for all.
Like to call the meeting to order, and Mr. Tabak, would you do a roll call, please?
That will note that Mr. Andre is excused. Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mr. Gatten?
Here.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yeah.
Mrs. Costa?
Here.
Mrs. Reckles?
Here.
Mr. Scarrow?
Here.
Mr. Marcus?
Here.
Mr. Forster?
Here.
We do have a quorum, um, and the notice of this meeting was, um, notice per statute. Um, and I don't think we have any community participation tonight. Nobody has filled out a card or turned one in today, so I'll, um, just kind of reading the statement, and we'll get started with the options student presentation.
Good evening. Tricia Spende, Director of Online and Blended Learning, and that's about all I'm going to say. Because this two amazing teachers are gonna take it from here.
All right, um, I am Mindy Benny. I teach four K through twelve grade at Options this year, so I guess I still got it. Um, and this is Jeanie Gravolsky. Um, I teach STEM with the Academy students and our two-state blended students.
Really slow transition.
Um, so we are here today to show our career banners that we have been working on with our students. So our students in first, fifth, and middle school all were asked to create a career banner. Um, this Gravolsky will go through how they kind of developed that or whatever. Um, but we had them, we like to start, we wanted to start in fifth grade and then have, do it again in fifth grade to see how their change, their options have changed, what they want to do has changed, and then continue to middle school. Uh, we did focus on, um, a lot of the STEM type jobs that were available. However, especially with my middle schoolers, we did have a conversation that, you know, a lot of arts and other careers do employ STEM, do use science, technology, and general mathematics within it, because of course, the first question I got was, but I want to be an artist. And I said, but that's okay, because you need to use those pieces of STEM to do your job too, so.
I will pass it on to you. We need to go through the steps that we use.
Right, yep, I, this all kind of got brainstormed because, um, we felt that we needed to bring in some career focus throughout, um, starting early on and through eighth grade, so they're kind of maybe have some more, have some thoughts and, um, as far as how to proceed forward and decide their classes in the high school level, because, you know, in the past, I've, you know, I, my own personal, I have kids that are just out recently, and my son had no idea what he was doing until his late junior year. Um, and I tried, you know, discussing with him all the time. This is, yeah, yeah, so it's, it's something that I think you have to have in the forefront all the time. So, um, the goal was mainly not to choose so much a specific career as it was to just to get to know your interests and how maybe your interests could flow into your possible career in the future. So in the first grade level, we were just kind of, you know, I found some really cool, um, stories that were A to Z careers. And so we just kind of introduced certain careers, a scientist, all these various roles of better scientist roles, types of things, and made it really simple. But then the fifth grade, um, I found this mynextmove.org, and I liked the format of that because it was not so much of choosing a career for them or finding a career for them as as much as finding themselves and what kind of a person they are. Are they artistic? Are they more of a person that's a a follower? They want to go by the rules? Do they want to be more in a management or more scientific, um, type of a career? And then this particular website offered just endless amounts of careers that they could research and look into and and find a little bit more, um, go in depth. And so basically, I, I gave based on the age, you know, my little first graders had this little simple sheet, and then they, I found coloring pages with careers, and they did that, and then we sublimated like this is hers, um, sheet over here, and so then I sublimated their coloring. But then the older kids, they had to find their career online, and then I kind of set the template um, for the younger kids to go into Canva, and then they actually went into Canva and they updated their template. And as the kids got older, we gave them a little more freedom.
Yeah, so you can see on the bottom there is all some of my middle
Right, those are middle schools that I've had to take after.
They had, they had completely way, they were told what they needed to have on their banner, and they could design it as well, however they wanted. Yeah, um, so there's our full color, you know?
Yeah.
Had a lot of extra stuff on it, I mean, what they wanted to do with it.
Mm-hmm.
I, Jean, I mentioned too about at the end of each of their units, they always talk about the STEM careers.
Right, yes, um, the lessons that I worked through for STEM, um, at the end of each lesson, they touch on two or three careers, and that's a part of the lesson I don't miss. I think it's really super important, and it's really got, has some interesting, um, uh, careers there. And so again, I touch on, they're every week, they're getting exposed to different careers, even at the first grade level, which I think is really, really kindergarten levels and on my two-state people. So this is just, um, if you're not familiar with the sublimation process, um, you have a sublimation printer, and it, it has ink, um, and the ink actually permeates into cloth instead of like vinyl, just kind of sits on the top. The sublimation will actually are pours into, it pours into the fabric. So we got the garden banners, and, um, this is a heat press, so once we heat it on on a, on the sublimation paper, this heat press, you press it down and, um, and you get just beautiful vibrant, um, things. And so we're having fun. We've, uh, created a fab lab. We're just started this year, and we are having a ball just kind of coming up with some really fun ideas to bring in STEM and our fab lab and just keep building a foundation off of that.
From our project leadway grant?
From our project leadway grant, yep. So, um, this is just a picture of one of our students, um, with his banner, uh, on the right-hand side, our little beekeeper here. Um, she, I think she is in the video, but she went home. She was so excited about working through this project, and ironically, her family aren't, they're gonna keep, start keeping bees this summer. So she has her little bee, beekeeper outfit already, and mom just sent this, uh, picture to Tricia a couple of days ago. So it is, it is resonating with the kids, and, and once they saw these banners, they were really, really excited about it. Music is prep. I was going through the project leadway process of, um, getting to the actual banner, and, um, so, but when they got to the final part of it, they were, they're, what can I take it home? Because we have them in the lab, so next.
Now we click the video or?
Yes. So these are just a few of the students.
I'm a space engineer, because I like space, flying, you know, like engineering.
My name is Evan, I'm a fifth-year student at Options, virtual charter school. I love searching because I certainly think that probably my school would be pretty
My name is Evelyn, I'm with Christina Option. I'm a teacher, I'm a chief schoolteacher. She and I have my siblings, and I think I'm really into it.
My name is Raya, and I'm a fifth-grade student at Options, virtual charter school. My career I picked for my banner is a military new year alchemist, and I picked this career because I have one mother, and I want to be an artist.
My name is Kay Schreiber, I'm a student at Options, virtual charter school. I chose, um, game ward as a career banner because I have, uh, my uncle is a game ward, and I just think it's a good app.
My name is Jill, I'm a first-year at Options, and my career is to be a janitor, to know I'm a veteran, and I want to be a veteran in my career, so I can help people. I'm a librarian, but I am a graduate of Options School, who actually worked a year to be a doctor, like, without my father.
My name is Caitlin Alfred, I'm a eighth-year student at Options. My career choice is managing, managing, I chose this because I really like managing, and I don't really, I think it's not really possible. I'm a seventh-grade student in Options, and I chose this career because I believe flying a plane is good, but I want to fly really fast.
My career choice is a music teacher. I chose this career because I really like music, and I really like to know their people.
So we were, for, for the first time, um, working vision project, we're pretty happy with, um, with the results, and we want to keep it ongoing, and, um, was that the last, that was last night?
Yeah.
All right, so, so, yeah.
Questions? Very nice.
Yeah, mainly outside. Yeah, we're excited about our fab lab, and the kids are excited, and, um, end of the year, I really try to focus on technology quite a bit, and so we're brainstorming some neat ideas. Everybody's excited about it. We have excited about our fab lab, so, yeah.
I, I think we should probably give the public face to our dog.
Yes.
It's a company who provided us with several projects, they did their grants, and we, the total amount for Options was a hundred thousand dollars, so.
That's amazing.
It's a significant amount.
Yeah, yeah, so it's definitely more in brain now in the Options program. She's a lot more, you know, opportunities at the middle school level now that we can, we can focus on, which is one of us. And respond with more.
Awesome.
Love it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, uh, next on the agenda is the approval of minutes, and we have, um, been given a copy of the closed session minutes, um, we can, we can do that, uh, we'll have to do the minutes of the, um, after-school district boundary, or all the altering of the school district boundaries, one separate from the other, but looking for a motion for those.
I move to approve minutes of the February twelfth, twenty twenty-four hearing, alter school district boundaries as presented.
There are second?
Second.
I'm moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the February twelfth, twenty twenty-four hearing to alter school district boundaries, um. Can we do that all in, yeah, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Need a motion to approve the regular and closed session minutes?
I move to approve the minutes of the February twelfth, twenty twenty-four, regular and closed session, school board meeting as presented.
There are second?
There's a second.
So I'm moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the February twelfth, twenty twenty-four, regular and closed session school board meeting. Uh, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, those motions pass. Uh, general and other fund bills, Mr. Turin?
The general other fund bills this evening covers checks number one-five-one, four-seven-nine through one-five-one, six-two-eight, wired transfers number seven-oh-six through seven-oh-nine, and ACH check numbers five-seventy through five-ninety-five, and a combined amount of three hundred thirty-five thousand, three hundred eighty-one dollars and fifty-one cents, or fifty-two cents. Um, there's a memo providing some additional information on several of the bills, and then a copy of the monthly treasury report for the month of January, it's at the end of the bill listing.
Yeah, does somebody, anyone have questions for Mr. Turin?
I do, and I need to find
Okay, I'll, I'll have one question for you. I'll give you a chance to make that.
Thank you so much. And I'd, okay, go ahead.
What is the math learning center, and is there purchase of math curriculum?
Yeah, but I think they're looking at different math curriculum right now, so that's a pilot program that they're doing at the elementary level.
Um, though, how many, um, so I see we did ten new projectors, and that's part of our annual refresh program.
Yeah.
Do we generally do about ten a year, or how, like, how is?
Yeah.
How often do we have to refresh?
Good question. Uh, probably less going forward because the technology has changed. So these ten are the, kind of the older models, where they have the separate projector unit as opposed to all one, like the, the one about Mr. Tabak.
Yeah.
So the ones that were replaced were like in the business ed lab at the high school, which had the older units.
Okay.
And then the newer one has the LED kind of bulb, so they, they last a lot longer.
Yeah, so going forward, there's probably going to be less.
Yeah.
We have a lot of rooms, there's a lot of projectors, so.
I know.
It's really, that's a lot of
That's not very many, but I think if you looked at earlier in the year, there are
How many more do we have to convert to this kind?
Right off, I have to ask Mr. Turin again, I'm not sure.
Okay.
The, the old projectors, and you can replace the bulbs on them, but the bulbs cost as much as the projector.
Yeah, right.
So you basically throw the projector away. These bulbs, you can replace, they're like forty bucks for the bulb, and spend like hundreds, so.
Yeah.
The lifespan though, I don't know, you know, I would still think ten plus years is probably about what you're looking at. So if we have two hundred, I mean, probably three hundred plus classrooms.
Yeah.
If you get ten years out of them, that's at least thirty a year.
Yeah.
So maybe we get one in ten years.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, even in ten years, so much technology changes in ten years, so, okay, I was, yeah, I was just trying to kind of understand.
We, we did make that decision to go with the projectors, though, over the TVs, the large touchscreens, because those cost several thousand, and their lifespan is less.
Yeah.
And we feel the students, you get a much larger projection.
Yep.
You know, to get a TV this, a hundred and ten inches, you're paying
Yeah.
You know, eight, nine thousand.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Okay. Seeing none, and looking for a motion to approve.
I move to approve the general other fund bills of February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, check numbers one-five-one, four-seven-nine to one-five-one, six-two-eight, wire number seven-zero-six to seven-zero-nine, and ACH numbers five-seven-zero to five-nine-five, and the combined amount of three hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars, fifty-two cents as presented.
There are second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the general and other fund bills of February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, check numbers one-five-one, four-seven-nine to one-five-one, six-two-eight, wire number seven-zero-six to seven-zero-nine, and ACH numbers five-seven-zero to five-ninety-five, in the combined amount of three hundred thirty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty-two cents. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mr. Gatten?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mrs. Reckles?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Mr. Marcus?
Yes.
Mr. Forster?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, um, student representative report. We missed you guys last, last time, so.
For the high school, um, February tenth, students participated, or five students participated in the UTI Top Tech Competition, and all three groups moved on from the essay portion to the lab portion. Um, so congratulations to all five of them for doing an awesome job. Uh, the boys' basketball playoffs begins this Tuesday with the home game against Elven, and everyone coming should wear a way to support. And the girls, the girls can continue their playoff run this Thursday in Milton after a big win to bring home the regional title. So congratulations to them, and good buckets, they continue.
Who do they play on Thursday? I forgot.
Um, McFarlane.
McFarlane, yeah.
And then a big congratulations to the cheer team, Nathaniel Lincoln on the wrestling team, Tyler Westland on the swim team, the gymnastics team, and many powerlifting players who all competed or will compete at the state level. And senior night for basketball, Mr. Forster?
Yeah. At the middle school, the seventh-grade social studies classes simulated a military draft where their goal was to be granted deferment by the draft board, but also draft to a certain amount of soldiers. This past Saturday, the middle school hosted their fourth annual mattress sale. And here's an overview of some of the things going on at Matheson Memorial Library.
Um, at Jackson, fifth graders created their own water filtration systems in class using everyday materials and natural resources. Uh, third graders paired up with their reading buddies to present animal research topics, and first graders worked on measuring by measuring little monsters using cubes and paper clips.
It was gotcha book day, so congrats to the Wildcats for earning their books. And Mrs. Rick Nagels, class playing catch one hundred for the one-hundredth day of school today, a couple of days ago, and students had the opportunity to vote for a class one lunch, which was a success. They earned it.
Um, the annual book swap activities was a big success. Over twenty-five hundred books were donated, and students were able to find some new books to take home. Uh, third-grade students visited the Discovery World Museum in Milwaukee, which was an awesome experience for them. It was like two thousand pictures. And then first graders had some hundredth day fun. They made cup towers, various block patterns with a hundred blocks, and even had some fun dress days.
Fourth-grade Academy students studied the fur trade in Wisconsin and then did a beaver drawing project to display their artwork. And the third, fourth, and fifth-grade blended students have been working hard in art class to show off their creative.
Uh, CCA is having an informational night for everyone interested in the Gateway Technical College Edge Program. This program allows students to start working towards an associate's degree as early as ninth grade. Uh, the session is on March fourteenth, um, six to seven-thirty. And Evan, Lucas, Cooper, and Travis earned the Elkhorn Youth Bill's Weekly Employability Skills Award. So congratulations to them for modeling the seven eights.
Thanks.
And for parent connections, it started on February twenty-third. You can now register for this year's summer Academy kindergarten year recumbent classes, and we'd like to congratulate everyone that participated in the Mega Fair into the master builders of parent connections.
Yeah. I'll go back real quick. The Career in College Academy Edge Program will have the Wisconsin Technical College System President, so it's the head of all the technical, technical colleges will be down tomorrow to meet with the students, hear from them, see the program, and talk about, because they're very excited to learn the program and check that out, so.
Thanks.
I'll meet with her tomorrow.
Okay, next on the list is the first reading of the revised policy three sixty-one, instruction, material selection, and evaluation procedures.
I know the policy committee spent a couple sessions, uh, working on and putting this policy together, and, um, the blue language is all new language. The stricken through is recommended, you know, strike throughs. Uh, we decided to focus on the library material, uh, as opposed to just the instructional. We have a separate policy for instructional. I think after this is finished, probably carryover similar concepts to the instructional material piece as it has before, that challenge process was applicable for both, so.
And, and they will remain separate?
Then it would be separate, but I think I would recommend, you know, if the board is satisfied with what's in the library selection, that the similar concepts go over to the material since we're breaking that apart at that, so it's kind of similar to them, as they're already two separate policies, um, on that. So I know the policy committee, and there was a little bit of discussion afterwards, and I don't know if this is something that we want to work on through the, whoops, first reading of it and go through that draft language, or if it's something that we want to go back to policy committee again and redraft. There's a certain section, um, where at the last meeting, we had put in some language related to uh, fifteen right here, the library shall not acquire any material that is pornographic in nature, defined as printed or visual material containing explicit description, display of sexual organs or activity intended to stimulate erotic rather than aesthetic or emotional feelings. Um, after the, the meeting, we've gone back and we looked, there's, the legal standard is, um, they don't use the terminology pornographic, they use obscene, uh, because there isn't a legal definition of pornography. So all the cases go back to obscenity, and it's basically the same concept, but then there's a three-tiered test called the Miller Test. And I have reached out, Juliet asked me to reach out to, uh, Neola and check in with them. I have not heard back from them on the recommendations and so forth, so. I mean, we can certainly leave as a first reading, or we could adopt some of that language, but it might be worthwhile to hear from Neola and see what they say in relation to that.
Yeah.
Yeah. I remember, there's also a lot of people who have been kind of responding to it since this is, uh, been coming to us from, out of the, the policy committee.
Yeah.
And so just kind of getting a feel from the, from the policy committee standpoint would be kind of nice. Also, the other thing that I would, uh, would like to see in this, uh, I, I've said it before, is I think we're focusing too much on the, we're being reactionary in terms of, we're focusing on what a parent can and cannot do here, rather than focusing in on what would solve the actual problem, which is a rating system for the books that come through here, um, allowing us to be able to make the decision based off of a neutral third-party rating, and allowing the parents to be able to decide at that point, based off of that rating, where to kind of go with it, um, within there, so.
Uh, that's something we would have to create, though, because the, a rating system doesn't exist.
Yes, not, uh, yeah, aside from young adults, um, adults, and then
Right.
youth, I believe, but from administrative guidance, what I've given to the principals, we could incorporate that into the selection criteria if desired on the front end, and that's kind of a three-pronged test, because there isn't a uniform rating across the board, and so the guidance that I give them is they utilize common sense media, Barnes and Noble, and Amazon, and look at the average of those three for the recommended age range. Because what they're looking at is the explicit or the exploitive nature of the content, meaning, you know, what age is that appropriate for, not just the readability of the book or the text. Because we have some books, when you go in, and you have to be careful on the rating systems, because they'll say, oh, this book is like eighteen plus for an adult. The only reason why is because it's on rocket engines, and it's a high-level content stack. Well, there's nothing wrong with having that available, so spread all the way up. It's not about the rigor of the book or the intended audience. It's about the content of it, nature of the content, right? More similar to like video games have movie ratings and so forth. So those three services do have that, but it started, not very largely similar to the book challenge, correct? We had used it, pretty, yeah, well, we had started looking for and searching for it.
Right.
There's not a uniform.
Program available.
Well, and we had several, and the book challenge happened, several libraries, the, you know, PPI reached out, the American Library Association, but, you know, very, all these advocate groups and said, oh, we've got great book reviews, and so we took um, one of them out, the largest, or is, you know, library association, and they sent us, I think it was, uh, at the time, I had about a hundred and twenty-one reviews. Um, they said, oh, we don't have reviews for the other three hundred-plus books, but here's a hundred and twenty-one that we have, but not a single one of the reviews spoke to the age appropriateness of the content of the book. It was like reading the spine, the cover of the spine, although that doesn't do us anything.
Right.
So we could, I think, on that selection criteria, incorporate some language around, around that. It's, that will be a bigger challenge for, and we have a, a library here in the audience, but they, they rely on selection tools that, from the publishers and the companies, those book companies, because they don't have that uniform rating as well. It becomes more complex between the middle school and the high school level, to be frank. Um, but that's something that, you know, I guess they'd have to go through just for every book and just check and make sure, or see if there's ones that were, you know, potentially flagged as having more severe content, or a young adult or adult-type content, and then check and verify.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I would definitely be in favor of, um, based on the feedback that we've gotten from the public and based on, you know, the things that you've mentioned tonight, Jason, about not having a response yet from Neola, and um, I, I'd be in favor of sending it back to.
Sort of.
All right, I think we'll have to be groundbreakers in that, because all the policies, I haven't seen, it doesn't exist in other policies, that type criteria, that. We haven't done a completely exhaustive search, but we'll keep looking, so we may have We haven't done a completely exhaustive search, but we'll keep looking, so we may have to be kind of that.
And we could just put it from librarians and say, hey, if we're gonna, we're gonna do this and use those three tools to write these books, how much, what's the burden on?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd like to understand. Come down, okay, no, I'm good with that, or, you know, you're asking.
What their preferences, yeah, yep.
So does somebody want to make a motion?
Uh, I move. I'm with the table, uh, the revised policy three sixty-one instructional material, uh, selection evaluation procedures. Yeah.
You will say that.
Yeah, right.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to table, um, the. Uh, revised policy three sixty-one and send it back to the policy committee for, for their review. Oh, oh, sorry. I'm so sorry.
That's sort of nice, so right down.
All of, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I think we made a lot of great progress and I'm glad, I think it's a good point for the board to get that.
Yep.
Initial, so if you do have feedback, send that to me.
Yeah, please.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things that's in there that, um, that really wants your feedback on is, that's requiring. You know, at least five people.
Yeah.
That will trigger an actual review.
Right.
Um, so I'd like to, do you guys feel with that?
Was there anything else? I'd like, I've been part of, I've been kind of in those meetings sometimes, but like, I, I mean, sometimes I'm not able to be there, so like.
Yeah.
Is there anything else that you guys would like our opinions on?
I, I think that's the biggest change, what you say.
Yeah.
That we put in there that was, uh, kind of came out of the last.
Yeah, I, I'd like to define that a little bit more, um, you know, what that means. And, yeah, so there's, there's several other things I think that we need to. Kind of just refine the language on and be more specific and, yeah. Okay. Um, personnel. Mr. Tabak?
All right, we have a number of items for the personnel sheet, it's a couple. I want to thank Lisa Cos for her twenty-four years of service to the school district. And congratulate her as she is. Announced her retirement after the end of the school year. And then we have the appointment of, uh, Brent, Brent Christianson. As a high school boys tennis assistant coach, she'll be replacing Daniel McCaw.
Big loss and a nice pickup with Brent, so, yeah. Alright, so I need somebody to.
I move to approve the personnel recommendation sheet for February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four as presented.
Any, a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the personnel recommendation sheet for February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Um, looks like we have, uh, two school gifts to present this evening.
Yes, we have. Uh, Kevin Monte has donated one thousand dollars to Tivis Elementary to be used at the discretion of Mr. Prox. And the Elkhorn Penguin Swim Team has donated lapleins valued at two thousand dollars.
Very nice. Uh, anyone want to make a motion?
We move to accept the generous school gifts as presented.
So I moved in second to accept the generous school gifts. Um, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We want to thank, uh, Mr. Monte and, uh, the Elkhorn Penguins Swim Team. For their generous donations. Uh, let's see, second reading of the modifications to the employee handbook.
I did not have any, um, questions or follow-up questions after the first reading. Are there any portions that anybody would like to review? Otherwise.
I did have a question and it, maybe it's just man picks that I'm missing. Uh, there was this section, let's see, uh. I have E and H that I copied into my own message here, uh, for some school pay an extended school year. The prep time and then the payment per bus service time. There seems to be some incongruency. And unless I'm just misreading it and, and that could totally be it, yeah, we're gonna.
Yeah.
Was letter E and it, the title of it was summer school pay and extended.
H.
Oh, there, got it. And so E talks about one hour prep time assigned at twenty-five dollars an hour. But if you scroll to H, you can swap it out, but we'll only pay you four dollars if you do bus service.
Right, so bus duty is, it's a different, um, rate of pay, it's like a fifteen-minute duty.
Right.
That they go and do and so it's not a. It, it's a completely separate.
And I understand that, um, and in this section. They, um. It's four dollars per day, where in another section it talked about that four, four dollars for every fifteen minutes. I just didn't know of the consistency of that, the four dollars for the bus division and then. I, I don't know, it just seemed odd to me and again, it just could just be.
It's not, it, that's in addition to what they're being paid.
A salary, right?
Right, and they only get the four dollars per day when they're asked to give up the prep.
Prep time.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, to do that. So teachers have assigned duties or time within the day in which they can be assigned, so that's. I believe. It's only applicable, I believe, at the middle school on that side, not be up at the, the high school, I don't recall, at which. Level. Uh, the summer school was to streamline the payment process for that.
Okay, it just, I mean, like I said, eh. Not being familiar with it, it just seemed, there seemed to be just some oddity.
Are you concerned because? Yeah, it's like there's, there's the four dollars per day for the fifteen minutes equates to sixteen dollars.
Yeah.
Versus, versus the twenty-five.
Versus twenty-five and then there's teaching versus.
Versus bus.
Bus profession. I don't know.
There's, there's lots of different, yeah.
Yeah.
Pay rates or pay schedules depending on the act. And you're absolutely supervising bus and safety, one could argue, well, gee, that's just as important. Should be paid more, I know. Oftentimes it's market, i- it's hard to explain to employees sometimes, well, it's market-related, not necessarily value-related.
Right.
And.
Completely, I appreciate the time.
No, it's a good, it's certainly a good question.
It, yeah, like you say, coming, getting it, and again, I'll play the neat kid card. Um, then that will be completely understanding of it.
Were there any other questions on any of the other sections? And I'll, uh, thank, um, Taylor Rick for putting that all together and congratulate her on. The birth of her second child, so she's. Out for a while with the family and, uh, wanted to congratulate her.
Yes, for sure. Boy or girl?
She had a little girl.
Oh, yeah. Awesome. Okay, so if there's no other questions, looking for a motion?
I move to approve the modified professional and support staff employee handbooks as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the modified professional and support staff employee handbooks as presented. Do we have to do a roll call vote on them? Okay. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Alright, motion passes. And.
Alright.
We are at the end of our meeting so quickly, so.
We are, we'll note that for Mr. Andre.
Sure, that's in the minutes.
Um, quick announcements, the budget workshop is scheduled for next Monday, March fourth from five, seven in the Dewey Room. Uh, we're gonna focus on bringing the entire board up to speed regarding the state of the budget in a condensed fashion, what the admin committee. Went through, felt that would be a good process where they kind of benefited from. About eight hours worth before we dig into the mountain bolts, so, uh, Bill's prepared a great presentation there. There's a very. Um, good video from Wazbo which talks about the state of the, the state budget and financing, what you could expect. We think it's really important for the whole board to have that foundational. Um, background as we move forward and interesting, we'll have more budget. Meetings, uh, we'll have, we'll bring in dinner as well and while the Wazbo videos play.
Yeah.
Alright, board members are.
Can I, can I ask that for that meeting, can, can somebody give us an update on the recent referendums that have failed? Why they failed and what they're, what we know they're doing about, about.
Yeah.
Going forward.
The, you talking about the Burlington one or something?
Well, there's a bunch.
Was there a bunch?
There's a lot.
We can find, I just think it's important for us to understand what's going on in other communities so we can learn from it.
Yep, I agree.
Sounds good, thank you.
I, I think there was about four or five that were operational related in February, but then there's sixty in April. Oh, there's a lot more in April, okay.
So do you want to report this one on the four or five, or would you rather wait until like April?
I think so.
Yeah, gives us something to work with, yeah.
We went through it this morning in our admin meeting. Alright. Um, you bet, we can do that. And then, uh, board members, wanted by you to. The, um, avid re-validation, and that's March twelfth at the middle school. Um, the agenda is linked in your board notes there. I would encourage if you've never been, if you can make it to the panel discussion of the staff and the students, it's a great. Where they talk about their experience and what they did and sort of go through a Q and A. Um, that was all.
Right, um. Looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn, um, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Alright, we have seven, Floyd, which was six.
Six forty-one.